We call the council meeting to order tonight. Welcome, everybody. First order of business is the invocation. We have First Presbyterian Pastor Paul Elgin here with us tonight, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance after that. So please join us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I wanted to let you know that I pray for you even when I'm not here.[134.01][134.01](Laughter). Because I think you really need it.[136.84][136.84](Laughter). As all we do, as we all do, right? You know, I...
Yes, we'll accept anything.
(Laughter) I don't envy you your responsibilities. I shepherd a church, and you shepherd a city of tens of thousands of people and making millions of dollars worth of decisions. So I'm glad, that's why I'm glad that we include matters of faith in our council meetings. So thank you for that. I was reading the Book of Revelation last week, and I read this section of chapter 21. "I heard a loud voice proclaiming from the throne, 'Now at last, God has his dwelling among people. He will dwell among them, and they shall be his people, and God himself will be with them. He will wipe every tear from their eyes. There shall be an end to death, and to mourning, and crying, and pain, for the old order has passed away.'" Times that we see so many troubles in our city and in our nation and in our world, those are great words for me to hear, to know that we have a divine life ahead of us, not only in the next life, but this life too. Pray with me, please. Lord our God, we look to you and to Jesus Christ our Savior. Renew your grace and your power in our lives, we pray. Renew your grace and power that we may have light even in dark and distressing times through the Savior. May we overcome as we wait faithfully for your kingdom. Help us to be ready to take anything upon ourselves to serve you with body and soul, with all we have and we are. May we belong to the hosts of those who go to meet you, who wait for your coming kingdom, which will bring comfort to the world and to all the peoples who now suffer and grieve. Lord our God, have mercy on our times and on our city and on our world, and grant that with thanks and praise we may soon see the signs of the fulfillment of your promises. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, again. Thank you, Paul. And thank you, Matt. Gloria, let the roll call show. We do have Lisa missing. Moved to excuse, second? It's moved and seconded to issue her an excuse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Mayor McFarland, we have six minutes that have been submitted, and I'd like to move for approval of the regular council meeting minutes from April 16th, and except for the record, the police advisory board meeting minutes from January 12th, the airport advisory board meetings from January 23rd and March 27th, the historic preservation commission from March 26th, the youth commission from March 10th, and the arts and humanities commission from March 7th and April 11th, as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes from the aforementioned meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes have been approved. Claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of claims against the city for April 11th through May 1st, as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the claim's been approved. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Any changes from the council? Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes or the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the tonight's meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a special presentation tonight. I believe the Elks are here, as I see them in the front row. So do you want me to come down there, or...
Yeah, absolutely. Before we do the check-in photograph, I'd just like to say a few words about the Elks. This is the fourth year that we have had this partnership with our local Elks Lodge. Prior to that, we were receiving some scholarship funds for swim lessons from a local ambulance company. That program no longer was able to continue, and our local Elks Lodge, Lodge number 1957, stepped up, and they have been our partner for the last four years. In the last three years, they have provided over 500 free swim lessons to our local community, which is great. This year, they will be donating again another $2,000. That'll fund another 130 swim lessons, completely free of charge, to anybody in the community. Again, we do about between 1,200 and 1,400 swim lessons every season, so about 10% of those are free to the community through the Elks Lodge. So this is a great partnership. We're very happy to have it continue. There are a few members of the Elks Lodge here, so I'd like to recognize them, and I believe they have a few words to say as well.
Yeah, please, thank you.[487.81][487.81](Applause).
I'm Grover Ramsey. Some of you know me. I've been here four years now. This is Walt Lewandowski. He's our exalted ruler. And that, first of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to... This is Peter Richards. He's our photographer with...[511.13][511.13](Laughter).
That's his Elks number, right?
Yes, and I don't know, we might have a few others in here. Other than Donna, I guess not.[521.83][521.83](Laughter). But you all could be.[525.83][525.83](Laughter). Anyway, I want to thank you for allowing us to do this, that children and veterans and the less fortunate are primary areas of help for the community, and that what could be better than making sure that our children don't have unfortunate accidents? And knock on wood, I believe that we're keeping that record here in Casa Grande of not having any fatalities from swimming. So we're really glad to be a part of that. So Walt, do you have anything you would like to say?
Grover, you take care of a lot of work.[575.16][575.16](Laughter).
Okay, then.
We have the big check. That's $2,000. We...Matt already deposited the other one, and he's already started.[595.13][595.13](Laughter).
Man, where did it go?
Run to the bank.
Thank you very much. Do you want to hear the bill? Little fool will be on the outside. Here we go. One, two, three, four, five.[614.13][614.13](Laughter). Good picture.[616.13][616.13](Applause). Donna just handed me earlier invitations to come to the commission in my service for volunteerism, so I guess we'll be there also.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your contribution.[648.13][648.13](Applause). All right, next item on the agenda is item G, consent agenda. Is there anything on here that anybody wants to pull off, or is everybody okay with it? Okay?
We accept as presented.
Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride. Yes. Councilmember Cortson. Yes. Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is item H, public comments. I do have one person who is registered. We do not have any public meeting or public hearings, so this will be the only opportunity to speak during tonight's meeting, so I would encourage Bonnie Brooks, if she's here, if she could come up, since I have her...your card. Come on up and tell us your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Bonnie Brooks, and I am a winter resident at Ironwood Village. I've been here since September of 2010. And I've sent some letters and some correspondence. I've been dealing with the garbage issue for some time, and so we've made a presentation in February of 2017. I've also corresponded and spoken to a few members, and they've all been very polite and very helpful, explaining some of the positions. But I just want to further explain the position that we have. I'm from Oregon, and we come down here for the wonderful winter weather and enjoy it here very much. And it's the only place that I know of, and I've lived several places, where we pay for the garbage service, the sanitation service, for the months we're not here. When we leave Oregon, we call Santa Pac. We say, "We're leaving such and such a time." They say, "Great, call us when you get back," which is what we do. So my bona contention is that we pay for a service that we don't use for just about half of every year. And as retired people on fixed income, everything goes up except our income. So it becomes kind of a crunch for us. And I just wish that some of the things that we mentioned maybe could be implemented. I understand there's going to be a pilot program, which is great, but we would be willing to pay a nominal fee for the months that we're not here, if that would help. But again, our biggest complaint is paying for a service that we don't use. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. But I think I've explained all of our positions in the letters I've sent since 2015. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't think we can, can we?
Actually, because of our meeting requirements, we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So, but we do hear you. We have received your letters, and we're in communication with staff, and they will follow up with you.
And I do understand that at one time, the seasonal visitors did not have to pay that garbage fee, and I don't know exactly when that happened, because we've been here since 2010. But it just seems to me it would be a lot more fair to at least have...we would do...we'd be happy to do a minimum fee, but I really am unhappy about paying for something we don't use.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak to council tonight? Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Patrick Hanson. Address is 1670 North Panal Ave., number 12470.
Hey, Patrick. I'm sorry. It's hard to hear you.
How do you turn up the volume?
Just speak up a little bit, please.
Okay. My name is Patrick Hanson. My address is 1670 North Panal Avenue, number 12470, Casa Grande, Arizona. I'm coming before the council tonight to share a short audio clip that I put together I hear their cries every single night and every single day, and every time I have a visit with them, they were taken without a warrant, they were taken without probable cause, and without any emergency circumstance. They have not been brought to any trauma counselors, they have not been before any mental health services to help them through this traumatic experience, and I would like to know how much money the city of Casa Grande is getting from Department of Social Services or Department of Child Safety to participate in these unlawful kidnappings. I'd really like to hear back on how much money the city makes to participate in such a thing. Thank you.
We will have staff follow up with you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to approach the council tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the floor and move to the first item on the agenda...first...the next item on the agenda, which is Ward of Contracts, I-1.
That one's mine. So the study session from April 16th, 2018, we reviewed a proposal from Motorola Solutions, formerly Creative Communications, for a dispatch radio console system update and two microwave links. It does come to the nice grand sum of just over $1 million, as you can see in your packet. But we wanted to double-check with you and see if you had any other outstanding questions. And I do have a representative from the vendor here as well.
We had a study session on this, and these are the units that are at the dispatch, correct?
Correct. And I can give you another brief review, if you like, but I know you have plenty of information in your packet.
If anybody else needs any more information? I think we're good.
Okay.
Mr. Pollak, anything?
No.
Okay. Can I get a ordinance, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 3076. In ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid for Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the purchase and installation of a radio dispatch console and related infrastructure, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $1,021,771.57, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Motorola Solutions, Inc., and authorizing the finance director to transfer budget authority to fund the acquisition. Mayor McFarland, I move to adopt ordinance number 3076 as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson. Yes. Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item I-2. Bid for Office Technologies.
Mayor and members of council, tonight staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a managed print services contract with Arizona Office Technologies, also known as AOT, utilizing the Mojave, Arizona Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. The city currently has 112 devices throughout the city facilities, 37 copiers, and 75 desktops. That is comprised of a number of different makes, models, and types. Of the 75 printers, there's 46 different models, and there are 39 different black and white cartridges and 15 color cartridges. So there's quite a disparity. Right now, we're decentralized, so when people need supplies, they'll either go to office supplies, order them, or some of them come from our current vendor, Toshiba. And so as a result of that, plus the service orders that they make, we get daily, weekly, monthly, and quarterly invoices. And so it's a little bit less efficient than we would like. And so Arizona Office Technologies offers a managed print services program where they would refresh all of our photocopiers, or all of our copiers, the 37 units, and then 20 of the desktop units included in a fee. We currently pay about $8,500 a month. $65,000 of that resides in the IT budget, the rest are throughout the department budgets. The city produces about 120,000 black and white copies and 31,000, 32,000 color copies in the course of a month. And so the contract with AOT would actually reduce the price to about $6,900 a month. So compared to $103,000 a year, we would be paying closer to $84,000 a year, so savings of about 18.5%, or about $20,000. It would also result in indirect savings, such as they monitor our printers, so when the toner gets sounded 20%, they would send supplies, so we wouldn't have the unused inventory on the floor and things like that. And so it would also provide consistency in the units and the ability to call service in on standard equipment, and so there wouldn't be specialty parts and things like that required. But that's kind of the recap. I'm happy to answer any questions about the services.
So I'm hearing some parts and that sort of thing also. So in addition to the cartridges that they'll be doing and monitoring that, then they'll also do...it's not a service contract for servicing the machines, is it?
It is also. I apologize. It's the labor maintenance and supplies, so it's all in...
Doing cleaning, cleaning them, servicing and keeping them?
Yes.
Oh, no, very good.
I noticed you had, in the previous, you had like 120,000 copies projected, and you're moving it up to 125,000. Is that 125? Is that reasonable, or do you think you might exceed it? Because I know you have different staff and different projects coming on board.
Yeah, we actually did some modeling. We did two assessments on usage and also interviewed the users. And so we would actually pay a monthly basis, but on a quarterly. So in one month, if we exceed, and another month we're delayed, or we have less, we would even out on a quarterly basis.
Okay, great.
Just to follow up, I know there was like 400 pages of...
Sorry.[1666.83][1666.83](Laughter).
So just to refresh my memory, on that, is there going to be like a timeframe that when you ask for supplies and stuff, that they have said that they will provide that in a certain amount of time? Because I know that that's issues with other companies like that.
Yeah, so we have a 24-hour response period, and so same on the service, they're helping us minimize our downtime as well. And so from a service model, they're much more on hands as well. Yes. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Gloria, can I get a ordinance number, please, on item I-2?
Ordinance number 3077. In ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Arizona Office Technologies for the purchase of managed print services, authorizing expenditure of public funds in a base amount not to exceed $83,532 annually, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Arizona Office Technologies.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3077 as presented. I can add and subtract, and it's a good deal.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson. Yes. Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item of business, I-3. Accepting a bid from Cox Business for the purchase of broadband access.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Staff has recommended the mayor and city council approve a new five-year contract with Cox Communications of Arizona for internet services at our public libraries, at both branches, at an increased rate of 100 megabits per second. Currently, the libraries provide internet access to our citizens at a rate of 30 megabits per second. per second. This includes use of the internet on our city-provided computers and use of Wi-Fi on owner-provided devices throughout the buildings. Working with Cox in the IT division, staff has recognized that internet speeds are topped out much of the day because of the, the heavy usage of the Wi-Fi throughout the building. This provides slower service to our patrons. This proposal will triple the speed of our internet service to our citizens at both the main library and the Vista Grande library. The Universal Services Libraries Program, commonly known as the E-Rate Program, that helps ensure that schools and libraries can obtain internet access at affordable rates. Our library is eligible for a 90% reimbursement cost for this, for providing this service, the internet access to our citizens. The current contract is $21,840 annually for internet service at both libraries. The new Cox proposal provides the higher speed at $30,000 per year. This is a difference of $8,160. After the 90% E-Rate reimbursement, this goes clear down to $816 for the entire year for both libraries. So, at this time, I would stand for questions.
Mr. Powell, just to make another comment, I can add and subtract, and that's a good deal. But I think Mary had brought up earlier about how important it is that we have the availability of people that may not have an internet connection in their homes or whatever to be able to come to the library and, and research or, or use the Publix. And I commend you for what you're doing in the library to make that possible for a lot of people in our community.
Thank you. I'd have to give all the success to Amber and her staff.
It's also in support of what we're trying to do, too, in terms of getting internet access to more people.
Yeah, and I appreciate every effort that you can do to, to provide that, because, again, just to repeat myself, this is, in fact, I had a grandson that's looking for an internship and that. He couldn't do it if he didn't have, I mean, that's the first step. They don't want your phone call, they don't want your letter, they don't want it, they want you to get on and fill the form out first, and then get the thing back. So, it's just, a lot of folks don't realize how really crucial it is to daily life. Health insurance, that sort of thing. So, again, I appreciate, and anything that we can do, we are totally open to anything you can do to help with the technology access. Thank you.
Especially our libraries.
Yep.
Yes.
And, yeah, and I was speaking to Amber right there. Anything?
Ralph?
And it also fits very perfectly with our strategic planning process and priorities. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, can I get a resolution number for I, three, please, Gloria?
Resolution number 5096. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Cox Business for the purchase of broadband access, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $30,000 annually, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cox Business in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona State bid list.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of resolution number 5096.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote for resolution 5096?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is I, four. It's authorizing submission of a grant application to Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council, again. Our staff is recommending the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to accept a grant from the Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens, should this grant be awarded from the request for proposals recently advertised. This grant would allow the city to continue providing services for the existing senior meals and transportation program for the next five years. On March 31st of 2018, our department submitted RFP to the Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens. This proposal would be the start of a new five-year contract, providing congregate meals, home-delivered meals, and transportation services to the senior population in our area. Should this grant proposal be accepted, the Dorothy Powell Senior Center will be able to continue the meal and transportation programs from July 1st of 2018 to June 30th of 2023. Grant funds are awarded on an annual basis, and the, the initial contract would be just for one year. As long as the city meets specific guidelines set within the grant agreement, they would be awarded for years two through five. To give a clear picture of this program, we provide over 2,300 units of transportation, or excuse me, 3,200 units of transportation, 8,400 congregate meals, and 24,000 home-delivered meals to our area seniors in a year. That was in the last fiscal year that we're recording. The total of this grant is $139,863. The total for the general fund subsidy is an additional $165,002. This in-kind amount provides city support, such as staff salaries, facility maintenance, utilities, fuel, and vehicle maintenance, to provide these programs to our seniors. At this time, I would stand for questions.
I, I like the name of that place, so.
Well deserved.
The, if you've ever gone out on the delivery truck, I don't know how many have had an opportunity to do that. It, it's, it's really wonderful to see these people that are, that are stuck in their homes, that can't get out, can't take care of themselves, and how happy they are to get that knock on the door with their meals provided on a daily basis. And I know the drivers are very caring about the way they deal with them, so I think that's one of the nicest things we do in our community, is, is doing the delivery for the seniors.
Thank you. And we do have volunteer drivers, too, that help support the staff.
Yeah. Well, it wouldn't really get done if it didn't have volunteers, because it's really driven by volunteers, so. Any other, anybody have something on comments? Okay, so I think it's a worthwhile effort, so. Can I get a resolution number, please, Gloria, for I, four?
Resolution number 5097. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the submission of a grant application to Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds from Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens in an amount up to $139,863 for the purpose of the city's senior meals and transportation program, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with Penal Gila Council for Senior Citizens, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5097 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote on resolution 5097, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is I, five. Accepting a bid from LZ Delta, writing our motorcycles.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm gonna use my notes, and then we'll talk a little bit about this. The police department requires authorization from the mayor and city council to authorize the purchase of two 2018 R1200 RT BMW police package motorcycles from Go Easy Motorcycles, not to exceed $58,000. As we discussed before in our study session, we started this project back in 2015, and we realized there was a need for new motorcycles, because they were reaching into life due to wear and tear and, and just overall usage. We understand that money's tight. One of the things, the priorities for the police department is to find alternate funding sources. Through talks with the director from the government, Governance Office of Highway Safety, we secured grant funding. Unfortunately, because of the federal government, some of the issues they were having, the funding got held up. So, over the course of time, we remained persistent, and we were eventually successful in acquiring these monies. So, we've come before you through a study session, and we've discussed this with you, with the council regarding our need for these motorcycles, the transition from the Honda to the BMW, and we're ready to move forward. We only had one formal bid that was, that came in, which we are very happy with, came under, under the $58,000, which gives us about $800 to, to pay for the wrapping of both motorcycles. So, everything worked out really well. Besides that, if there's any questions?
We had a full study session on.
Yeah, we did that one, too, and very good one.
I still want to write it, though, when you get.
We can do that before.
Make sure, make sure, before you let him get on here.
Yeah.
The mayor driver.
I won't turn the sirens on.
I will.
We can do that in the back parking lot.
All right, seeing no other comments, then Gloria, can I get an ordinance number, please, for item I, five?
Ordinance number 3078. In ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from AZ Delta LLC DBA Go AZ Motorcycles to provide two BMW police package motorcycles, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $57,812.26, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3078 as presented. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote for ordinance 3078, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item J is boards and commissions. We do have one consideration for approving an appointment of Tim Sodollet to the Board of Appeals for the terms to extend through August 4th, 2020. Tim's not here, is he, tonight? Just wanted to thank him for his service. Yeah, so, you know, especially all our boards and commission members, we want to thank all of them for, for their, their service, because, as we all know, they get paid a lot of money. And I'm kidding, I'm just kidding. It's a volunteer job. So, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Tim is official Board of Appeals member. Thank you again, Tim. All right, the, we have no public hearings tonight, no executive session, correct, Larry?
There is no executive session.
Okay, so we'll move to reports. Ralph, we'll start with you, since Lisa's not down there for me to call her, Mary.
Mary's not here today.
Yeah, really, my alter ego over there.
Had the pleasure to attend the Casa Grande silent witness recognition dinner, and really, really well, and, and obviously, going back to the issue of volunteerism, you know, they do such a great job and, and donate so many hours. Also attended the Casa Grande Police Department Award Dinner, and great to recognize all the leaders within the police department. And there was a really unique presentation regarding the, call it a Rampart scandal out of Los Angeles, and the speaker went, they went through that as part of it, and really interesting is to see the progression of, of all the lessons learned that came from that, and also seeing that our police department went through that, the training and presentations with him, and I, I think it's, it's a really good information. Attended the Crossroads Church National Day of Prayer, and again, I think a lot of the local churches did National Day of Prayer for elected officials. And finally, had the opportunity to go to the Eloy Groundbreaking for their city hall, and it's just to see the, the, it's, it's just being developed, and a lot of excitement there in Eloy, and I think it also speaks well, we had real good representation from Casa Grande about the whole thing that started about eight, nine years ago, about being a regional partner and, and having those regional relationships and how important they are. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ralph. Matt?
Thank you. A few things, I got to, we did do the, the annual day of shredding, and with e-cycle this year for the youth commission, and went very well. The e-cycle's really taking off as well with the event. And they couldn't give me the tonnage of paper that we did, but it was a lot, to be, to be politically correct. It was very busy. We had our system down, we have a lane now for the big loads, which is entire trailer loads, and a lane for just the smaller loads, so it was, we're getting pretty good at that. And this year, we had a new shredding company, says, why don't we roll these cans over to the cars, and we can do it there? I said, hmm, I've only been doing this for like eight years. I never did that before, so. It was pretty cool, learned, learned a little, had a lot of fun, and helped people out. And I also got to see Kevin how the rear load recycle truck works up close and personal, and it is an impressive machine. Thank you to your staff, especially Michelle's always out there, very helpful, and getting us taken care of. In my position as mayor pro tem, I got to attend a couple of ribbon cuttings, groundbreakings, and events. The first was a new tattoo shop on Colorado, which I, it's over by Papa John's Pizza. Unfortunately, their contractor's running a bit behind, so I didn't get a tattoo that day, because they weren't ready to give me my Casa Grande tattoo, so, you know, they said, come back, so we might do that. Got to go to Mission Heights Preparatory Academy, the high school. No, that was last Wednesday. And they had a great ceremony with their, all their seniors did their college unveiling, or their future plans going to the service or whatever, and it was a, they made a really big do out of it, and I, I commended them for doing that, too, because it is a big deal. Those kids are doing good things, they're kids in our community. So, you know, just like our youth commission here, the future's looking, looking very bright, and so they were well represented. And then this morning, Grande Innovation Academy, the charter school behind Home Depot, finally got their new gym done, and not finally, but they got their new gym done by a local contractor, Capital R Construction. And I say finally, because the principal had a neat message there about the word yet. And she says, as they're registering people, they said, do you have a gym? She says, she didn't say no, she just said, not yet. And today, they do have a gym, and it was very nice. And they have about 600 kids, and they're adding on to their school by Capital R Construction, which they were starting today, they said. So, you know, big things happening there. Craig, thank you for letting me do some of those things, fun to get out and do that. I don't know why they're always on Friday, but, you know, just kidding. I'm kidding.
That's what I let you do.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell?
I, I don't know how many of you, we always approve the minutes from the different groups, but when you read through them, there's a lot of good stuff going on, and, and I know, Gloria, they had the, the Plain Art Event. They had 12 adults and 23 young people that took place. Now, that's, that's something, and that should make us very proud. The, the youth group commission will be purchasing a banner from Casa Grande Union High School Student District, students to sign and send to Parkland, Florida in commemoration of the lives lost. That's, that's big. That's really neat. Then you go to the police. Every one of them here are, are good, but the, I know the, if you read what the, what the police are doing, they, they have the heat areas where they're really putting the, gathering up and putting a corral around the bad guys, and, and so I'm, I'm impressed, and I haven't always read the minutes, but I will from now on.
Right.
I was invited over to the ASU Preparatory. They did a presentation on, so there's a group of students in this, and councilmember Powell and Lisa, the other Mary was there. So, they presented it to us, and what they do out there is the students, I get the feeling, because this is the second one I've gone to, that they, they can go to a teacher or an instructor and say, hey, we've got an idea. And the instructor says, fine, put it together, but it's got to be, you know, and then, and then you present it. And so, what they did is they brought it forward, presented it to three of the council members, and part of the reason was because they're looking to maybe the city partnering, not necessarily financially, but more land and that. And so, there's, for this particular one is going to be, is they're looking at. one is going to be, is they're looking at, for lack of a better word, community garden. But it's a different agriculture, using the different new agricultural techniques, uh, like.
Agronics.
Agronics, but then there's the hanging.
It drips down.
Yeah, and, and then the drip down and that. And so they presented, each one had their little, uh, niche section that they wanted to do, and even maybe some suggestions of where they wanted to do that. And so, uh, we're thinking that they're going to be approaching us again on that. I just admire watching, uh, and again, like with our, with our youth coun, youth council here and that, uh, that they're, they're given a little bit of free rein to say, gee, what can you do with this? And they do really good things. And, and it's very interesting and all. Um, been watching the, uh, community center go up and that, so I'm excited. And, and it looks like, you know, it's coming along. And hopefully with weather not being too much of a factor, we're gonna get that done really quick. Um, had some good, uh, comments about the new striping. Yeah, we really appreciate the new striping and the pavement maintenance projects and that. Um, again, when people tell me about the striping, I do let them know how expensive paint is. It is, it is paint. I did see a truck today in Tucson though, that said that they were the ones that invented the green pavement.
The green.
But so, they're in Tucson, Kevin, and it's green.
Invented what?
So, just, yeah.
White lanes.
Oh, okay.
Green, but it's green pavement. So I don't know if they meant it's because it's green, because it's porous and it could go through. I don't know. We'll, we'll talk about that. And, um, again, I don't know what I would do without the shredding program. I gave Danny my money. He goes, it costs? I go, you have to contribute. You just have to contribute, just go. So I don't have to go anymore. Danny get, does it and, and all. And final thing is, is I'm very proud. I have a grandchild graduating tomorrow from ASU. A long line of family members, uh, yeah, I'm glad. I just wish a little more on the U of A side, but just the idea that Casa Grande has, you know, we really do have, ASU has made a real mark on Casa Grande. And, uh, and it's our, my hope that, to see them come back here. I know my daughter graduated from ASU and she's at the high school. So, uh, again, and listening with the students, with the leadership, with their partnering again with, uh, the programs at ASU. So that gives that connection and, uh, their chances for success and going even further on that, so.
Donna?
Um, just a couple of things. First of all, Richard Wilkie, uh, congratulations again. Um, he received the Economic Development Director of the Year for medium-sized cities. We're very proud of you for, for that accomplishment. Um, the other thing, I, I attended last week, the police memorial ceremony that is, um, the first of May of every year over in Florence. Two hundred plus, um, law enforcement was there, um, including the family of Tate Lynch, um, who was remembered. And so it was nice to see Casca Grand PD there and participating in that.
That's uniforms, huh?
Yeah. And then, um, the other thing I wanted to mention, the governor's office of commission for service and volunteerism is going to be in Casca Grande this month on the twenty-first. Um, set it up to use this facility. They're going around the state doing focus groups with different, uh, cities on what volunteerism looks like in your community. And they picked Casca Grande to be one of those. So anyone that's interested in that, um, let me know. We're hoping to get a, a good turnout, because we have a lot of opportunities here in Casca Grande. So I'm excited that they chose Casca Grande for that site. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Donna. Well, I have a couple of things. I've got, uh, some congratulations I wanna hand out, uh, to Richard Wilkie for the Economic Development Manager of the Year. So congratulations, Richard. Great job. Um, also, uh, a congratulation to Selena and your crew for, for, again, being recognized and, uh, certificate of achievement for financial management. So congratulations again. So, um, just shows that we have some really good, good staff members here, good team. And, uh, you guys just keep continuing to perform above and beyond, uh, our expectations. So, and I, I just wanted to thank everybody. Um, this week, just remember, uh, I think it's Teachers Appreciation Week and it's also Nurses Week. So we have two, two things going on this week. I was at the hospital this morning doing a proclamation for Nurses Week. So thank your, thank your nurses, thank your teachers. Um, I did go see the new gym at the Innovation Academy. I just missed you over there, Matt. But, uh, it's, it's very cool. And then, uh, this Saturday, I think it's Special Olympics Tournament, Saturday, May twelfth. It's for Special Olympics. It's at Dave White at eight AM. So if you haven't signed up a team and you wanna play, uh, check with, uh, you can probably get an application to McMasters. I know that Reggie has stuff over there.
Darn, I'll have to go to McMasters.
I do wanna thank Matt for filling in for me. Uh, I did take, I took vacation last week, but it wasn't really vacation. And just kinda, in closing, I wanna thank everybody for all your sympathy wishes and, um, and, and just, uh, support for passing my father. Um, passed away on Monday. So I wanna thank everybody. That's all I have.
Sure. When we sat down tonight, we had something that was given to us. And the reason why is because Casca Grande's future is so bright. We have to wear sunglasses.
There we go. We're kind of like the Blues Brothers of the.
Being adjourned.
Put those on, I put those.